Good evening, the board has now returned from closed session, we'll begin the regular session of Keys Union School District Board of Trustees meeting. As 4.1, report out close session items, we have nothing to report out. 4.2, approval amendment of agenda, we have addition of 10.20, approval of 2022-23 preschool salary schedule, increase of 6% on schedule, one time 2% off schedule, and 2% towards the health and welfare cap, is there anything else?
No, no addition.
Alright, do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition?
I'm motion.
Well first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You gotta wait for Jeff to go.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, moving on to the flight.
Sorry Jeff.
Who's doing the flight salute? Thank you. Moving on to invitation, address the board trustees, do we have any? Alright, going on to announcements, a whole list of announcements, 7.1 Spratley Middle School, October 12th is peak, begins every Wednesday evening for EL parents, did I say it right?
PK.
PK. PK, Spratley Middle School, October 13th is leadership meeting. 7.3 is Spratley Middle School, October 17th to the 20th, parent teacher conferences. 7.4 Spratley Middle School, October 20th is the spelling bee. Spratley Middle School, October 21st from 5 to 7 is a school dance. 7.6 is Keys to Learning Charter, October 24th to the 28th, red ribbon week. Keys Elementary School, October 24th, 8:45 to 9:15 is our red ribbon week kickoff assembly, outside probably. Keys to Learning Charter School, October 27th, fall into books carnival, it's super fun, I recommend everybody going to it. Even if you go to the elementary school, go over to the charter school. Keys Elementary School, October 26th, 8:45 to 1:15 is the pumpkin run and family barbecue. 7.10 is Spratley Middle School, October 28th is the fall rally, you can tell us more about the rally? Perfect, 7.11 Keys Elementary School, November 2nd, 4pm to 6pm is a new fall carnival. Moving on to staff reports, we read the staff reports, any questions or concerns?
I don't have any.
Alright, moving on to student reports, 8.2 Spratley Middle School.
Hello, we're student representatives of Spratley Middle School, I'm Yosa Toledo, an eighth grader at SMS, as well as president of student council.
I'm Shania Ponse, an eighth grader at SMS and vice president of the student council. The first thing we will talk about is the Carl's Jr fundraiser with SMS parents and students raising $197.28. We would like to thank everyone for making this happen.
On September 21st, we had our wear five colors to welcome in the fall season with 72 students participating. In October, we had our yearly wear pink Wednesdays.
Also in this month, we had our soccer and volleyball season come to an end with both soccer and eighth grade volleyball teams landing in third place, and seventh grade volleyball earned fourth place. We were very, we had very kind emails from Waterford as well as Tula Christian thanking us for our sportsmanship and cheering.
We have our SMS fall dance since October 21st, we have a team of from student council putting in the last touches while some of the student council works on the the first rally of this school year that lands on 28th of this month. We had people from without permission come to our school and show us the importance of sex trafficking and how to learn refusal skills to not be trafficked.
We have our yearly red ribbon week, red ribbon week, the 24th to the 28th, we have dress up days being Monday decade day, Tuesday twin day, Wednesday western day, Thursday black day blackout day, Friday jersey day. We also have our girls basketball season starting up with child being this week.
We had fast students take a trip to tobacco bootcamp with fast learning skills to use against tobacco. To end it off, we had a staff versus eighth grade volleyball game with the students winning the first third set, but the sadly the teachers and staffs taking the second third, the next two thirds. Thank you for listening, hope you have a great rest of your day.
Alright, I just want to say one thing about yogurt, worked at every home game and only missed one away game for the volleyball girls. It takes a lot of commitment and shows. Taking a leadership serious, and to go to the third night of the tournament, he had to promise to do a lot of stuff at home just to get to the game.
This young man?
Yes.
You know, Jeff, so as he was speaking, I was thinking, thinking now there's a young man that that his voice is appealing in the microphone, so you have this good speaking voice in that microphone, and your words were pronounced perfectly, I understood everything you said and I just wanted to commend you on that. And and with you, young lady, I enjoyed the smile as you gave your presentation, so thank you both for that, yeah, very much so.
It's a pretty loud cheer too.
Alright.
I appreciate it yogurt, we'll see you basketball. Thank you, moving on to 8.2 Keys Elementary School Student Council. You guys could have brought your moms to come see you.
Hello and good evening to you all, I am Jasmine Jahan, the student body president. As president, it is my job to help set goals for student council, be a good role model, help parent assist with activities during the school year. I'm looking forward to all the activities this year.
Good evening, I'm Jasmine Lopez, student body vice president. It's my job to look after student council and take the lead when president is absent, I'm looking forward to all the fun events and field trips this year.
Good evening, I'm Mipal Corr, student body treasurer, it's my job to take care of all our hard work earnings and our money. I look forward to all the fun events this year.
Good evening, I'm Haley Gonzalez, but student body secretary. It's my job to help Miss Moran and student council whenever they need it, I look forward to future trips and fun events this year.
Good evening fellow board meeting attended, I am Mia Patola, student body lead announcer. It is my job to tell the whole school about new and fun events going on this school year.
Good evening, I am Andres Olis, stu- student body announcer. I announce stuff on the intercom whenever we need to, and I'm looking for the new events this year.
Our color run was a huge success, we were able to raise $10,200. Students were able to run as many laps as they could in 30 minutes and get as much color as they could on their shirts and their cells.
Today we are going to be telling you about some, some of the things going on at our school, Monday, October 24th, 2022, red ribbon week kickoff assembly on the blacktop at 8:45 to 9:15. Student council will be hosting the assembly since Ms. Rogers isn't here. The plans that Ms. Rogers has made for the student council, for student council to do with the kids.
Wednesday, October 26th, 2022 is the pumpkin run and the western family barbecue. The western family barbecue will be after the pumpkin run, instead of serving hamburgers, it will be hot dogs and cone of ice.
On Friday, October 28th, 2022 will be club rush day, club rush day is from 2:30 to 3:05. On club rush day, each club sets up a table and banner and advertises their club to get people to join.
Novem- November 2nd, 2022, PTC Fall Carnival from 4 to 6. There will be food trucks and fun activities and live music.
That is all for today, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple questions, did you guys all get elected in or did you guys sign up?
Uh, both.
Both, Ms. Murray, can you come up? Just tell us a little bit more about it, this is as strong as I've seen the student body on this campus, so could you tell us a little bit more about it and um, do they run election, do they sign up?
Actually, if I, if I could share what Mr. Murray shared yesterday in a meeting, I think will be quite telling, especially after your comments, Mr. President, what he shared was that he, he was sharing with Mrs. Rigert, that he had the absolute best student council he had had, and that he was really going to be very sad to see them go, and she said, well send them over because I'll take good care of them. So he, he knows that you're an amazing group of individuals, and he was talking to you about and sharing that with with others in the district. So congratulations on, on all your work.
Absolutely, so student council this year, they did, uh, Mrs.
Rand?
Rand, thank you, she, she took applications for it.
Yeah.
There were only so many people who wanted to, so we didn't really need to do elections this year.
They, so they all fit in their role?
They all fit in their role quite well, and there was plenty of space for all of the students who wanted to fit in a particular role. We have a lot of really good opportunities this year for student leadership. We, I have an overwhelming amount of fifth graders that really want those leadership roles this year, whether they're within student body ASB, or whether they're going through the club systems themselves. So hopefully they're going to be even better leaders this year because my goal is to work with them two days a week, we're meeting every, what? Monday and Tuesday from 2:30 to 3:05.
Read your own report because I knew that.
Yes, so we're, we're meeting every Monday, Tuesday, and, and I meet with club presidents and vice presidents on Thursdays. I'll be working with the treasures and secretaries every other Friday. But my goal is to, to really work with students to kind of expand out in a very positive way, so that we're a really good, strong model.
It's very strong this year.
You know, Mr. Murray, so you mentor these children here?
Absolutely.
You, you know, and Jeff and, and Milo were saying that, you know, this is the best group. The thing is, is when I was listening, I was thinking that, I was thinking, man, now these kids know what, what's going on. And so if I count, starting from the, the boy, what was your name, young man?
Andres.
Andres.
Oh, alright, Andreas? Starting, I'm gonna say you're one potato, two potato, three potato, four potato, so four potato. That would be you, young lady, you said you guys earned $10,200, what was that money for?
That is for priorities, field trips, and clubs, and also special events.
I'll be, well, thank you for telling and sharing that with me.
Can you tell them who's setting the priorities for that?
Yes.
So the, so my goal this year really is to turn over aspects of budgeting for student body to student body and to really have them make some really hard decision making.
Sure.
About, you know, what is student bodies priorities and what is it that students think is important? So, and there are going to be a lot of, of different conversations that we're going to be having about, you know, what does a, a, a strong student leadership look like, so that we can move in that direction.
Well, you know, Mr. Murray, from what I can see, you're creating leaders right here.
Come in.
These young, these young people here are amazing, so, but you know, I'm a Mr. Murray fan, so, you know, I, I, I don't expect anything less, Mr. Murray.
This one's for the students, why do you guys think you raised so much? Because I was shocked to hear how much you guys raised. Yeah, so was that you guys' involvement, was it a good year, what, what do you think caused it? Go ahead.
The color line?
Yeah.
Yeah, but why do you think the donations were so high, especially in this economy?
Because we were like, we like had two weeks before the color run would end and everything. So a lot of it was a lot of rushing, worried about us not getting to our goal, which we did get to our goal, and a little bit more over the budget. So it was a lot more than we expected.
So you think the, the students drove their parents to donate up?
And, um, Ms. Moran had said the class that got the most money would get a bunch of fun stuff on a Wednesday.
Nice.
There you go. Wow.
We normally don't stop the mean to ask all these important questions, but you guys were so strong, we wanted to. Well, and I appreciate it because I told, what did I tell you guys? We all don't think you're potatoes.
You're right.
Yeah, no, but you'll need to work on some of those fourth graders, so that they can step up to the, to the plate when you're gone next year and over at the middle school.
And that's one of the things that, that had me really worried this year is because we do have so many strong fifth graders. I was like, oh, I can go and really focus the fourth grade, because all of our pub leads and all of our ASB needs will all fifth grade this year. So I'm going to be pulling some of those fourth graders in because how many of you guys were pub leaders such?
It sounds.
Yeah, it does, um, because it's responsibility and getting used to leading a group, and that's where it all starts. So I'm very excited and I'm so proud of my fifth graders and of my leadership, so.
Yeah, you said something?
Oh yeah, it was all about leadership that we went through in fourth grade.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Mrs. Suzie, you have to top that. Going on with the cast testing by Mrs. Suzie? Thank you guys, all your homework.
It's amazing.
I know.
Yeah. Um, so I do have a PowerPoint done.
Did you lift your microphone up, they're a little shorter.
Can you not hear me? Okay, um, so I put together a presentation off of the 2021 to 2022 California Assessment of Student Performance. So prices for our district, and what is it, just a little bit of background information. The Smarter Balance Sumative Assessment, we look at, they're tested in areas of English Language Arts and Mathematics, as well as there's the California Science Test, which is the CAST, not all grade levels take that. Um, the subject areas, we have the sub areas in each of ELA, we look at writing, reading, writing, listening, research inquiry, and for math, we have concepts and procedures, problem solving and data analysis, as well as communicating reasoning. Um, in the CAST science test, they are tested on life sciences, physical sciences, as well as earth and space. Okay? So why do we assess? We assess to provide teachers, students, and parents with information about how students are performing in certain subjects. Which students are assessed, so all students grades three through eight take the ELA and the math test, and then students in fifth grade and eighth grade take the CAST test personally. So, I'm a visual person, so I, and to me, it's easier to relate to a pie just from teaching math for so many years. You could see like, if it's half the pie, most of the pie, or a little bit of the pie. So looking at third grade, um, on the left side are the ELA scores, and so there are four levels, level one, level two, level three, and level four. Of course, we would like to be at level three and level four. Um, so you can see at ELA, we have more than half our third graders that are level one. Okay, the percentages are also on there. Um, and so we have a nice chunk of level two, and then we have level three and little level four, which are smaller pieces of our pie for ELA. Okay, but we also have to remember to give the consideration, the pandemic we just experienced, or kind of a break in things, and we'll go, we'll go over that a little bit later too. So looking at math, you can see we have more students at level one in grade three. Other thing, third grade, this is the first year they do the state test, so this is new to them. Um, level two, you got a nice piece of pie, level three, nice piece of pie, level four, of course, there's a little slip. So moving on to fourth grade. Um, ELA, if you look at the pie for ELA, it looks, to me, looking at it visually, it looks very nice, nicely divided. Um, we have a nice chunk of level threes and a nice chunk of level fours, so we just need to work on those level ones and those level twos and kind of shift them over. And so again, fourth grade, this is their second year taking it. Um, the first year that these students took it though, was when we first started after the pandemic, it was a little different for them. So this was kind of like the real thing for them.
Is that showing through the whole state of the state?
Pretty much.
Yes.
Um, and with math, again, you can see the pieces of the pie we have, we have a pretty big chunk there at level two. So if we can push those over to three, that would be really good. Right? And then moving on to fifth grade, fifth grade, remember, is one that takes the science test, so they have three pies to look at. Um, looking at ELA, there's a nice chunk of fifth grade that ended up in level three, which is very nice. Um, we still have some nice sized pieces in level one and level two, but those level twos, we could, you know, hopefully easily work them over to get to level three. Um, math, you can also see there that we have big chunk of level one and a big chunk of level two, and that seems to be a trend with math. And that is across the state as well. And then in their science, we have a huge amount of fifth graders that were at level three in science, which I thought was amazing. We did pretty good.
And when this first started, you had a carbon atom on the front there. At that, I seen the electrons, I knew it right away.
So moving on to sixth grade, sixth grade has ELA and math. Looking at sixth grade again, for ELA, we have a big chunk of pie there in level two. Um, hopefully we can ship those over to level three for this next year.
You know, it has a lot to do with the structure of change of schools and all that also?
Well, there's a lot that plays into it, I mean, you figure, you know, these kids were on, you know, Zoom for a couple of years, and so this is kind of the first actual getting back into actually doing the state test like we've done it prior to the pandemic. So it's, it's an adjustment for them.
And, and I think it would be, as I shared with, with Carrie, we wanted to, to show, because really the trends we're seeing are no different than what's happening across the county or the state, we're seeing the same things. And we're all also looking at the fact that most of our professional development or our work has been in language arts, and math has kind of taken a backseat to it, and we're seeing those kinds of results. But I think pandemic, change of schools, um, just all of those things, they all impact these numbers, absolutely.
So for sixth grade in math, we have a pretty big chunk of one and two there, just, but it's my opinion, looking at that through teacher hat on, it's, I mean, if you look at sixth grade for ELA and math, they're pretty consistent in both subjects, just looking at the visuals. And then in seventh grade, whoops. Um, ELA, we have a lot of level threes. Um, and so those, there are level one little piece, is a smaller piece, which is nice to see, I'm a little partial to seventh grade, but, um, and then in um, math, of course, still area of need, level one, we still have, you know, just a little bit less than half of the seventh graders that tested, level two is a, a nice big chunk, so if we could just get those level twos up a little bit, and when you're looking at like their scale scores and stuff, some of them are almost there, it's just giving them a few more points, hopefully this thing.
How big are the point gaps?
No, I did not even look at that. Okay, eighth grade, they were our group that, the other group that does the science test, so they have three pies. Um, in eighth grade, the ELA, same nice chunk of level threes, which is nice. Um, level ones and level twos aren't, I mean, they're still there, but again, the level twos, if we could push them over and push the level ones up, we're doing pretty good. Math again is clearly a need, um, we have a lot of student, a lot of eighth graders were in level one for last year. And then their science test, they did pretty good on that one too, it was pretty consistent with fifth grade, because fifth grade had a lot of their biggest pieces with level two. So that's.
Really like science.
We still won them at level three, but I mean, so that's pretty good, because our level one, consistent with our level one group. So that looks pretty good, I thought. So, we also have students who take the California Alternative Assessment, um, students who are on IEP and, um, looking at their, their needs and disability, they qualify to take the California Alternative Assessment. And so this covers third through seventh graders that took it, we didn't have any eighth graders that took it, we just had third through seventh grade. So I put them all together, and in ELA, excuse me, you'll see that, you know, there's a big chunk of level three, so we're definitely hitting ELA hard, we're definitely supporting ELA. Looking at math, again, we have consistency with that level one group being large. Right, and so this is just an alternative assessment that, that students take.
Yeah, compared to the science?
There's not, there's not an.
Any eighth graders in here.
No, they, they, it was a pilot year.
There wasn't a fifth grader who, who was doing the car, and there wasn't an eighth grader who's.
They have to qualify based on their specific, exactly, and there goes.
Yep. Okay, so, looking at our EL population, um, I did some graphs, so this is ELA for Keys Elementary, so this is all third through fifth graders. Um, and looking at the, the graph, there's four categories. The dark purple is our EL students, the green is our English only students. The light, um, it's like a light purple is our, they are students who are classified as initially fluent in English, so they're second language, but they're already fluent in the English language. And then the, like lavender or whatever, is the students who've been re-designated as fluent English. So looking at this, you'll see, because level one is the category all the way over to the right, as you're looking at the screen, and you see the long, the largest bar, that's our EL population in level one. So we're still as a whole needing to really support those EL students in English language.
How long do the students stay in the RFP for their whole education or?
Once they're re-designated, they're re-design.
And they stay as that?
They continue to be monitored.
Right.
And in case that they are slipping back, then they are allowed.
They're not going to go into the, another category.
Yeah.
They're already moved over.
Correct. Right, so this is for ELA, so clearly you still, you know, we still need to support, because either they're still in need for support. Um, this is the Keys Elementary, third to fifth grade for math, same categories, EL students, as you see again, the largest bar there again is our EL students, they're in, they're in level one. Okay, so also, this is the CAST, so this is Keys Elementary, so just fifth grade. Um, I, I couldn't like this one, because we have a, a larger bar in level two. So that, I kind of like that, um, remember CAST at Keys Elementary is just going to be fifth grade too. So we had, um, in level two, we had quite a few.
I think that's impressive for, for fifth grade, first time seeing the test, and, and doing.
That's, I like this.
Are you pushing the stronger science program in all the grades that they are more attracted to?
I am getting, yeah, I have a plan.
I got the answer to it, I was gonna use it in my closing, right now, the internet, I've been studying physics now about five years, wrong. I'm talking three, four hours a night, for five years, I know all the atoms, I know, you know, with the protons, I know, alright, so.
Yes, teacher, here we go.
So here's the thing, right now, social media is bringing scientists to this forefront of coolness, of, of, of new age teaching, where, where these scientists are cool, they're, they're, I mean, they're, 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 I mean, you got Neil deGrasse Tyson, who is, he's comedic, he's super intelligent, he brings science a whole new look, I mean, Carl Sagan was years ago in my day, and Carl was kind of, I mean, brilliant, but he was kind of the scientists now are making it cool, I mean, there's a science girl on, on YouTube, I mean, these people are happening, and I'm oh my gosh, I, my kids, their friends, it is the thing, so when I see the graph in science, I used to go, this is a no brainer. It's because this new age in science has come before us.
Right.
So.
And if they're on TikTok, you know the kids are watching.
Well, true, I'm talking YouTube.
That went through, um, so looking at Spratley Middle School, this is of course six seventh and eighth grade, the ELA. Um, I did like this graph also, because if you'll see, we have some re-designated students who are over there in level three for ELA, which I thought was amazing, thought that was pretty good, making some growth.
What does CAST stand, what, what is that?
California Assessment for Science.
Yeah, something like that, okay.
I think that's test.
Testing?
And then Spratley Middle School, subgroups for math. Again, we have a lot of, we have our EL students in level one, but we have some larger part to our re-designated students, are going to be well, not too bad, on the level two and level three.
Well, just wait till they make math cool.
Um, and then here's our CAST, Spratley Middle School, subgroups for CAST. And this is, this would just be eighth graders. For the subgroups. And our, our re-designated ones in level two are almost even with our.
They have to work so much harder, they, they understand it more, probably even better.
Well, and, and many of them, it depends on what year they've come to the country, or been first initiated into an American school, so um, a, a lot of it is, is taken into that, so I, I think our scores again are not very different than any other district who has a large English language learner population.
This is, what, what's your biggest concern, if you had one, pick one?
Biggest concern right now is, is math.
Is math.
And, and that's not new, but we are, and I kind of, you know, talking myself through it, they have to be able to read these apps too, and so we do need to support the ELA, but we also need to get. They have to be able to read, and so we do need to support the ELA, but we also need to get some support in there for math. Because kids are now starting, but and this isn't new. Um, I remember a few years back, this was, this was a discussion that was going on several times.
Gotcha.
That math tends to be, um, you know, the area of need often.
Okay, okay.
And it's also been traditionally, the sciences and mathematics have been a very underrepresented population of teachers. There are fewer qualified math teachers than English Language Arts, for example, or Social Studies. Um, math and science has been a a big push. And it's it, the nice thing is that I think, as you said, kids are being exposed to it now that it is kind of cool to be a scientist. It's cool to be a science teacher or a math teacher. It's not the old stigma that I think came came with it. And so I I I completely agree.
There's a way to hire a math teacher.
We, and and you have to be able to teach algebra at an eighth grade level. And and that's, you know, multiple subject credentials. That that's not necessarily something you needed to to have mastered. So um, I I think a lot has has gone on. And and I I think we have work to do, but I think we're doing the best that we can with given what we've and plus curriculum, to be honest, it had never really been standard across the state. It was always comparing apples to oranges. So you were comparing schools and districts that were very different. I think some of that, good or bad, being having at least the same standard, to me, gives an opportunity for all kids to then show and meet a standard. So.
Do you think our science is curriculum or like what was?
What's, what is this taught?
Right, right, exactly.
Wait for the next slide.
All right.
So across grade levels, there are gains in ELA and math. I know that the pictures, the pies don't always look great, but believe it or not, there are gains. Um, some kids made like over a hundred points growth. It's just amazing to look at them individually. And see, there are gains. Um, the EL learner, of course, as I mentioned, we still have a gap there and it's still a concern. Um, the science curriculum has been aligned better, which shows in our score. So that that curriculum, curriculum alignment, it shows, we have evidence of that.
Gotcha.
Um, math continues to be a concern. And in preparation, okay, more interventions. We have interventions. I believe we're really doing a good job about getting interventions in place for um, ELA. Uh, we have new curriculum for our EL program that they're doing. Um, and I just think we have some changes, little minor changes going that are really going to make a difference for us. Um, and again, it's just getting the students familiar again and reacquainting them with taking the state tests, because they haven't done it. You know, this, last year was the first year that it was kind of like how it had been prior to the pandemic. We did test the year before, but it was so, I mean, it was like just a little piece of what we had done in the past.
Right.
Yeah. So next, so this next spring, when we take tests and get the results back, it's going to be interesting to see.
If we've, yeah.
And then we'll have something to, we will continue to have a gap, I I have no doubt. But at least you're you're able to look at a student and you can look at the shot, okay, this year versus this year, is there growth? And and if there's, the wonderful thing about us being able to look at some of these scores is you can really delve down and look at what what particular functions in mathematics, for examples, are the things that kids are struggling when they take that test? What is it that they're not understanding? So if we can focus intervention and and instruction to target those areas where they're the lowest, then we can see growth from, and that's when we talk about, you know, um, I ready, for example, we look at scores and they're in a yellow and we, to me, we we were talking at a training and and looking at it, and we have so many kids that are in yellow, but it's like, well, yellow is, it takes very little to get them to the next level. So let's focus on those and and have those successes. Is it the end and where we want? No, but but we gotta celebrate and have some successes for kids to be engaged and to feel like they're doing something. So to me, having two years of data to show, hey, you really did well. Okay, you you didn't do well. Why do you think, what are you struggling with still? Those are the kinds of conversations I think that most kids are 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 interested in having. Um, and and I think that we we have staff that will engage them.
Gotcha.
Students, did you like to know that they made, that made growth, any growth on the state testing, even though, because you know, to them, it's like, oh, we have that test again. It takes, you know, a week or whatever. So I was fortunate this year, I ran into a couple of students because I was looking at test information. And like I said, one of one of the students that I had last year didn't have a great year. But look at the state test scores for that student, and there was like a hundred and fifty seven point gain.
Wow, she kept bringing it up.
And that was just one. That was just one of several. And it's so it's like, they need to know that. If they know that and they feel the success in that, it's just gonna, you know, it's just gonna push the even further.
Well, it it would, in my, in my way of looking at it, I would imagine there's teaching and there's inspiring.
Right.
Right? To inspire, right? I mean, some children, I needed to be inspired. I couldn't be taught. I had to be inspired. I had teachers like Mr. Hopkins, who inspired me in math. He had to teach it a different way. He figured it out. So teachers like, you guys are amazing, just amazing people.
This is a printout that we send home with the little bars, right?
Correct.
Yes.
So that they they know exactly how well they did.
And on those reports, they they show the parent like the previous years, because I pulled one up just to look at it, so I kind of how I do it, parents would see. But like, some of the students, you know, their scores are on that printout from third grade up to if they were sixth or seventh grade or whatever, as long as they've tested in our district. And so the parents can clearly see.
But I've seen a lot of them on bridges. I'm as proud.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, we ruined the slide for you.
Thank you for
work. That was beautiful, Mrs. Susan. That was beautiful.
So next month, you're gonna have a presentation from Mr. Murray and Mrs. Ruger on on our attendance policy and and what that entails, and also a little bit to share with you how that's connected to the SARB process and how we're dealing with uh, with kids who are chronically absent.
When is this?
That'll be next month. We're trying to do a, kind of have a a presentation for you to on different areas. Yep, yep. Because it's it's hard to get all the information out sometimes on on a Friday letter, for example. And so we want to make sure that at least we we talk about things that are
Stuff we need to correspond with.
Absolutely.
Helps answers. I appreciate it.
I do, too.
Yep. All right. Any other questions? Moving on to agenda items, actions prepared for sick calendar, assistant with adopted improved policies of the district and our deemed routine in nature. There'll be acts upon in one motion without discussion unless members of the board request an item be removed from the sick calendar. In that event, it'll be taken up in that order indicated on the main agenda. We have any questions from nine point one to nine point five? Jeff, are you still with us?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Perfect. We have a motion to set nine point one through nine point five.
I'll make that motion.
We have a first, we have a second?
I'll second.
Jeff, you got beat out by Mike. Try harder next time. We have first, we have second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, aye.
Thank you. Moving on to action items, ten point one, approval of certificate classified confidential management personnel action items. Questions or concerns? Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
We have a first, we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, aye.
Thank you. Moving on to ten point two, consideration and recommendations to approve terms of employment contract for superintendent for July first, twenty twenty three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Um, I have a little thing. Board president initial, uh, it is recommended that the board consider and approve the contract for employment of Dr. Eli Brazil for the period of three years effective July first, twenty twenty three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six, with a salary effective of twenty twenty three, twenty four school year of two hundred and three, two oh three. The salary is based on two hundred and twelve workday and the current average salary for the superintendents in the Central Valley, tied to a six step salary schedule with a three percent increments between steps and in consideration of superintendent's six year longevity in the district. In addition, under the agreement, the superintendent would receive master stipend of thirty four, forty seven annually. Discuss this a little bit. Do you have any questions or concerns from the board?
No, I'm I'm happy with it. I'm happy we're locking in another three years. Yeah. I think I think we're very lucky to have someone that stayed with us for this length of time. It's good.
Um, we're just that kind of people.
Jeff's talking. Go ahead, Jeff.
Is L U happy with that?
What was that?
Is L U happy with that?
Yeah, yes, Jeff, yes.
All right, Wes?
Oh, no, I was just saying that we're we're good people and good things happen to good people, right?
So you're taking the credit for him being so good?
No, I'm taking the credit for saying that we made a good decision.
Mike?
I hope, I I think we're all happy with this.
Yes, absolutely.
I just want to say, Eli, you you support personally and professionally. And I've never seen a commitment for uh, sports or students in this uh, district by a superintendent. And and it shows when you sit in a seat for five hours watching volleyball games, when there's a lot more things you could be doing. Uh, the kids notice it. I don't know how many, how much the kids uh, thank you, but I know they interact with you. And uh, they know exactly who you are, what you do for the district, and um, that makes a difference.
That that makes it worthwhile, to be very honest. If it were the adults, I I would say that that my profession would not, that's not what I get. And I don't mind saying that. I'll say that in front of any employee of the district. What brings me joy is actually the kids and what we're doing. Everything I do every day, whatever, it's whatever battle it happens to be that day is to support kids and I'll continue to do that. And it's, and as long as I can feel that I'm doing that, then I will continue doing it. And when it gets too old, then I'll I'll know that the rodeo is over.
Doesn't sports wrap up your day, though, like?
It does.
And then with all the kids sitting around you.
The energy, it's, you also know that they've had a tough day and they're out there, they're putting it out. Their parents have made an effort to be out there and to 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 be there for them. And and how many parents sometimes come in and say, oh, darn, I was late, I couldn't get out earlier, or I missed this or missed that. And those are the things that, uh, you know, during COVID, we didn't hear any of that or see any of that. And that was hard. And I think that now things are, just feel so much better. And and I think kids are are thriving in ways that we lost sight of for quite a while, so.
But especially at a home game, the students can sit anywhere they choose and they sit around you.
Yeah.
You know, they they sit around you, even though they could say something or any that they they appreciate who you are. So it it shows in the sports games.
He's a leader, Jeff. He's a leader, for sure.
Well, well deserved, you know, uh, his conversations of what you do. Uh, you don't have to be at the games, but you do, you choose to be there, uh, and it's appreciated. Thank you, board.
All right, so we need to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I second.
Well, everyone wants a second on that one.
Yeah, well.
I'll give that one to Wes. All in favor, Jeff?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
So now are you gonna agree to it now that we voted on it?
All right, moving on. Now, there's a whole bunch of housekeeping. Um, I think I'll have Mr. Brazil explain the first one. They're all on the same lines and we'll just move through them. Uh, ten point three, approval of twenty twenty two, twenty three, super, actually, I'll have him explain the second one. Uh, no, they're all the same. Uh, superintendent salary schedule increase of eight percent on schedule, one time and two percent off schedule?
Yes, so this is for the settlement of contract for this year. So it is eight percent on the current salary schedule and two percent off uh, for a one time.
And that's for you, uh, management and
And this, and the superintendent.
Yeah.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
So management, including principals and and uh, district officer admin.
I'll make that move.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Ten point four, approval of twenty twenty two, twenty three, certified management salary schedule increase of eight percent on schedule and one time, two percent off schedule?
So this is for the certificated uh, members of the bargaining um, of management, anyway, that also on eight percent on the schedule and two percent off the schedule. And traditionally, this district has done what they do for the bargaining units, then does so for management, is why you're you're seeing all of these kind of come down.
Uh, me too, correct?
Correct.
Any questions or concerns? Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
We have a first? Uh, everybody's looking at you, Jeff.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Technology is amazing. Moving on to ten point fifteen, approval of twenty twenty two, twenty three, classified management salary schedule increase of eight percent on schedule and one time, two percent off schedule?
Same thing.
No, that's wrong. That's shouldn't be six, two and two.
No, the management classified chose to to do the other, which they have the choice between.
We have a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
I think Jeff was first. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. You can see, but Dana was pointing behind you, Jeff, saying you won. Moving on to ten point seven, correct?
Yep.
Dana, uh, approval of twenty twenty two, twenty three, certified teacher salary schedule increase of eight percent.
We skipped one. Ten point six.
Ten point six, sorry. See, they're all blurred on me. So ten point, that's why I asked you. Ten point six, approval of twenty twenty two, twenty three, confidential salary schedule increase of eight percent on schedule and one time, two percent. All the lines are the same, so.
So these are just the confidential employees who are at the district office and they are, again, they're confidential, so they're not under any bargaining uh, group.
Any questions or concerns?
This what you meant by the house cleaning?
Yes.
Housekeeping.
Lots of housekeeping.
Uh, the, with minimum wage changing, it's all gonna change. Um, uh, do I have a first?
I motion.
I have a first, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Jeff, you lost. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Now we're on ten point seven, approval of twenty twenty two, twenty three, certified teacher salary schedule increase of eight percent on schedule, one time, two percent off schedule. A removal of column G from salary schedule to to Cal Stirs reporting requirement of special comp to separate from wages and paid at same rate within the class. Increase master stipend from sixteen, thirteen, forty three to thirty four, forty seven. Difference between column F and G, that was a negotiation, housekeeping, correct?
Correct.
Any questions or concerns?
And as I shared that before, um, all of this was as a result of, in in terms of the master stipend, was as a result of an audit by Stirs. Says, uh, teacher's retirement um, of the county office. So the county office contacted the district and said, we must do this. So when we went into negotiations, it was kind of like, okay, how do we explain this? Because this is so ludicrous. You're we have always thought that our compensation was our total compensation and that went into our retirement. Well, and it does. However, our retirement has two, basically two accounts. You have a defined um, benefit and then your regular retirement. And all it's doing is saying that anything like a master's is above and beyond and will be reported to our defined benefit account and not to our regular. So that's not a choice we have. That's not a choice any of us have made. It's just, I I think it's just a way of the of the state uh, figuring out a a new way of making investments. But that's my personal opinion.
All right, any questions or concerns? Motion to approve?
I motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Moving on to ten point eight, approval of twenty twenty two, twenty three, certified stipend schedule increase eight percent. Long the same line? Wouldn't that be a little different?
No, because it's a stipend.
Oh, gotcha. Oh, because we're, we gotta raise everything. Any questions or concerns?
Have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
A second.
I'll second.
Jeff, you lost again. All in favor?
Aye.
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 If you can look into Mike's eyes, you're gonna know when he votes.
He sounds disappointed, he missed it.
Moving, uh, ten point nine, approval tentative agreement between Keys Union School District and Keys Teacher Association, twenty twenty two, twenty three. Mr. Brazil?
And so this is the approval of the actual um, tentative agreement or the the contract for the two thousand twenty two, twenty three uh, which will settle us for this year and we will be back at the table for the following.
And that just sums up all, everything you guys talked about in negotiations.
Language, language changes and and compensation, yes.
Perfect. Any questions or concerns?
No.
Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I have a first, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Moving on to ten point ten, very long one, approval of twenty twenty two, twenty three, CSCA salary schedule increase of six percent on schedule, one time, two percent off schedule and two percent towards health and welfare cap. Remove existing range A through C, rename range D to A and renaming remaining letters sequentially. Food service workers move to new range A, previously D. Move range B, professional, paraprofessionally, general ed and ELL to range C, previously E to F. I, how do you guys do this in negotiations? All paraprofessionals will be range C, all remaining ranges, letters renamed in same sequential order. My guess is this is all minimum wage.
Most, absolutely, yes.
So do you want to explain that or?
Well, it was, it was a, it was a way of us trying to address the fact that minimum wage is going to continue to increase and next is within this coming January. And so fifteen fifty is the lowest. So we, our salary schedule has traditionally um, in most, as is in most small districts in in the valley and throughout the state, have been lower. Um, once the the state had and federal has increased the compensation for for minimum wage, ours have never really been looked at in that sense and and supported. So this was a way to try and remove as much of any position or any salary line on our salary schedule that would prevent someone from saying, well, if I go to you, I make ten cents more than minimum wage, but if I go to series, I can make a dollar more than than if I'm. So this is the attempt to clean up the salary.
So visually, I'm picturing, we just took four columns off and slid everything down?
To a certain extent, that's kind of how I I, it's a little more than that, but yes.
Yeah. And then do we add on the backside?
Not in some cases, in some, yes.
Good. Any other questions or concerns? Any other questions or concerns? Motion to approve?
I motion.
We have a first, do we have a second? They're looking at you, Jeff.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Moving, good job working all this stuff. This is a ton of writing and organizing.
And we all done within the last, well, if it weren't for Elizabeth and Dana and Raul and everyone in the office, not so much Antonio, I don't know what he does, but.
He can't count to three. Ask him to count to three, he goes.
But no, it's, we, we've tried to do this because we wanted, obviously, to get everything out to the county so that they can look through and and then to process, because this is an awful lot of paperwork that must be processed in our payroll systems. And so we wanted to make sure that we have it correctly.
All right. Moving on to ten point eleven, approval of twenty twenty two, twenty three, CS, CSA stipend schedule yard duty increase to fifteen fifty per hour. Again, minimum wage.
Minimum wage. We want to be competitive and don't want anyone making, you know, can you imagine if we go out to hire an employee? Well, you won't make minimum wage. Not only is it illegal for us not to, but we needed to make our paperwork look like it did. So our hope is that in the near future, that fifteen fifty will be offset and I have a feeling that we'll continue to see rates in general from the state and even at the federal in terms of minimum wage raised. And so who knows when it's going to stop, because it does need to, somewhere, there needs to be a balance.
All right. Any questions or concerns? Motion to approve?
I motion.
Mike beach, Jeff, you want to be second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Moving on to ten point twelve, approval of twenty twenty two, twenty three tentative agreement between Keys Union School District and California School Employees Association, chapter five, four, four. This is this.
So this is the detailed agreement that includes the title or the title that includes the, any verbiage or the new salary schedules, all of that is the agreement for CSA. And we had, CSA was actually on sites today, visiting and booking, meeting with new employees. And the bargaining CSA representative from the Stockton office stopped by and said hello to us and once again kind of shared that she was very pleased of how she felt negotiations went and that we treated our, our employees with respect and dignity and know that it's a good district. So I would like to share that.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Moving on to ten point thirteen, approval of KUSD early head start, regional head start policy committee bylaws. This is something we do every year as they, as their parent.
Yep.
Committee changes them, correct?
Absolutely.
And questions or concerns? Do we have a motion to approve?
I motion.
We have first, do we have a second? They're looking at you, Jeff.
I'll second.
I think Jeff seconded when I was talking. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Moving on to ten point fourteen, approval of Keys Union School District Head Start Program Impasse Procedure.
So this is the approval of should the, the group come to an area of where they come to an impasse, this dictates the procedures of how that impasse would, would take place. So basically kind of mediation.
And they had nothing in place, or is it something?
Addition to or update to.
Okay. So it's just updated information. Any questions or concerns? Motion to approve?
My motion.
I have a first, do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Moving on to ten point fifteen, approval of early head start, regional head start ARP twenty one through twenty three budget. Just had to come this month, huh?
Yeah.
Everything else?
It has to, yep.
Any other questions or concerns?
That's until Raul take care of all that?
Actually, it's a county.
Yeah, some of it's a county, but Raul has to, has to do some of that also, absolutely.
Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I think Wes beach, we have first, you want to do second?
Sure, I'll be second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Ten point sixteen, right Dana? Approval of early head start, regional head start, twenty one, twenty two performance indicator report?
And this is the report that they have to show, much like we do, like their dashboard on how they're doing and what improve, how are their students learning in their program?
Questions or concerns? Motion to approve?
I motion.
We have first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Approval of ten point seventeen, approval of Keys Union School District Head Start Program twenty twenty two, twenty three retention incentive pay. Mr. Brazil?
And that is basically what it is. There were funds that are being used as incentive pay to keep individuals within our own head start program. And increasing their, their salaries.
Any questions or concerns?
Did they ask for that or did we?
Yeah, no, they, they asked for it. Absolutely.
Any other questions? Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
Second.
Jimmy, that was fast. All in favor?
Aye.
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 You really like that one or are you trying to go home, Jimmy?
I think home had something to do with it.
Moving on to ten point eighteen, approval of twenty twenty two, twenty three Keys Union School District Safety Plan? That's just been updated with concerns and there was a policy committee put together?
Yeah, correct. And we are going to be posting it and distributing it to our staff, obviously electronically through, throughout the district. And it is something that we will have to look at yearly and update. And oftentimes, it may just be name changes and positions or things of that nature, but as the requirements, as we see safety and student violence and all of those concerns coming to the table, more and more requirements are being asked of being elements within our safety plan. So I'd love to tell you that we won't have more additions to it. But I believe that in the following years, there will be more components that go into.
This year was a lot of changes or pretty easy or?
It was, it was a fair, fair amount.
Are them state or federal or both?
Both. The state actually opened up a CDE, opened up a section to deal with nothing but being supportive to the school districts at, based on the high need, based on the fires, the other natural disasters, the landslides, all of those kinds of.
Will we be running any drills or anything?
We, we have, in fact, we did. So we, we did training for staff that we did the live or active shooter on campuses. We did both, both of those trainings. Of course, it still requires the earthquake drill, I think, is the great shakeout coming up. We have fire drills still, although nobody's ever.
Lockdown drills?
Lockdown drills, all of that is still part of it, correct?
And is our plan pretty standard or is it built directly for our community and our region?
I think it's, it's, well, it follows the template set by the, the state and federal government, but it's certainly then, you know, we, we don't have the kinds of things like with CHP and other districts that are in major cities that have their own departments and all of that. So we're, we're very unique because our, we rely on the support of both CHP and that they communicate with sheriffs and that the sheriffs can show up and as quickly as they can and, and kind of, I know we're not rural, but yet we are when we consider ourselves to anywhere else, so.
Is, is it in a, in a great time response that, that?
I think they've done really, really well. I, I really do. And I think we've had occasion where it's been absolutely, I, I think they were here quicker than we ever thought that that could have happened.
Good. All right. Any other questions or concerns? Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I second it.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Moving on to ten point nineteen, approval of new revised board policy and administrative regulations for KUSD outlined in nine point five. Something we try to do every month as needed. Any questions or concerns? Motion to approve?
I motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Your eyes are getting a little tired over there, Jeff.
Please fall asleep.
Moving on to ten point twenty, and this is the one we added on. Approval of twenty twenty two, twenty three preschool salary schedule increase of six percent on schedule, one time two percent off schedule and two percent toward health and welfare cap. Status quo as the evening has been. Any questions or concerns?
Yep.
Any questions or concerns? Motion to approve?
I motion.
We have first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Moving on to discussion items, S R three.
S R three, well, the only thing I want to tell you is S R three is we are getting extensions, or we're hearing things of extensions coming down the pike. The other great thing is that our projects have all, all of the paperwork maps and have all been delivered to DSA. The fees have been paid. And we are hoping that within the next twenty, twenty some days, don't hold me to the days.
How many days?
I know Jimmy's going to ask.
Jimmy's got a calendar.
So hopefully, we will get those approved. As those come back approved, then we will be able to officially go out to bid and get an idea of what those bids come in like and then decide of, okay, these bids are just crazy. We need to kind of come together and decide what are we going to make first priority, second priority, and so on.
And I would still like to hold a workshop, you can't afford it all. That's great.
Absolutely.
Biggest question, I think I know the answer, but what happens if we only can afford half the items? What happens to the DSA approval? Does that still stay approved?
The, the beauty of it is it's approved. And so you, you will be able to proceed later. At times, there are certain specifications that if it's, it's something, and I, I don't, to be honest, I don't know enough of their coding, but if, if something major changes, then they sometimes request that you resubmit, but it's not as rigorous as, as anything like that.
Maybe ADA rules.
Exactly, but.
Building codes change if you.
We approve.
Exactly.
We send the blueprints in, correct?
Everything goes in.
So they're getting approved. But so say one item, we wait ten years, as long as there's no major building codes, that everything?
Absolutely. They are still your, your project.
Okay. That's what I thought the answer was, but I just wasn't.
No, that's actually a very good question, because you've paid for fees and, and for it to be reviewed. So it's, it's absolutely.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Moving on to eleven point two, Mr. Ammons track.
Well, his, his track is on the same track as everything else is at DSA.
Right on track.
But it's right on track.
It's not called Ammons track, but I like to tease him because he's, he's the one spearhead in every, driving everybody crazy. So in twenty days, he'll have, he'll be in everybody's office asking for the DSA paperwork.
We have pictures, we, we have, and we've been sent, we had our tech, we've done, we've, we've done one.
We've moved on.
We have.
Wide a ways. From a year or so ago.
But I, I will mention, and probably Jeff can add to it, we went out there for a soccer game and to just walk the field. It looks beautiful from driving by, but it's crazy to walk on. Jeff, you have anything to add about the field?
It was terrible.
That's what Jimmy's saying. I think you got Jimmy's vote.
I went to a soccer game the other day and I stepped first, my first step, I got in water and then it goes uphill and oh, it's just.
That's what the dirt's for, to dust it off.
I guess, I don't know.
No, it is a mess.
All right. Moving on to superintendent report?
Okay, well, parent conferences are coming up, so I just wanted to remind everybody of those. Soccer and volleyball are now over and the teams did very well. In my opinion, I truly did enjoy attending many of the games and we're moving right on along. I believe tryouts for basketball began yesterday are going on. So we move right on. I think the first games are the twenty something in October.
Twenty third?
Twenty fourth.
It's in your board report.
It's twenty something.
Twenty fourth's a away game, twenty sixth's a home game.
So we're, we're, we're coming up with, with those. We continue to work on the committee to update the wellness plan. That's our next piece that will probably be coming to you in either November or December for approval. That has to be done so that when we have our cafeteria review next year, then we have that in place and, and it's ready. Not so good news. We discovered a leak coming from what we believe is the fire safety system at KES or one of those fire hydrant.
A wall.
Closet, whatever that is. And it has, there's the possibility, we'll find out more tomorrow, that it is actually been running for quite a long amount of time. Obviously, you don't see any damage or anything, so we are hoping that it is actually somehow getting to either the septic system and being gone through that way and is not flooding anywhere else. The campus, obviously, staff have looked and searched and there are no visible areas of any flooding or of any water coming out, but clearly, someone, one of our employees actually did go under or attempted to go as far as they could with a flashlight and could see that water was running. So we will keep everybody posted on, on that. Obviously, if it poses a safety hazard, then we'll, we'll address that. That's my biggest concern, but we're hoping that it, it will not be a cheap repair, whatever that is. I just want to be very, very upfront. This is not, not a good news one. Our COVID funding maintenance projects, like I said, they're all at the ESA. We'll, we'll hope for those to all come through and we'll be able to do them. I want to thank, thank our labor unions for their engagement in negotiations. It was most definitely a collaborative process. It's not that there aren't some moments that, that we'd all like to not have, but, but they're had. And I think at the end, I, I really do appreciate and respect how this district conducts its, its negotiations. I want to thank Mrs. Suzha for her hard work on the student state assessment results presentation. Was always one of those things that, you know, you, I wanted to get to and never had enough time to, to get to. So it was very nice to have her support in doing that. I'm working with the county and state to acquire fentanyl, anti overdose, the Narcan nasal spray for the campuses. What we're trying to do is to continue to remind parents, particularly as we're headed to Halloween, to be vigilant and cautious. Because the number of deaths in the county is on the uptick. And this seems to be something very, very scary because it's, you know, it, it truly does look like candy and touching or coming into contact, depending on age of, of the person or their health can be very disastrous. So we've ordered the, the Narcan. There's a standing physician's order from the state of California. However, now they're saying that there is, of course, there is a shortage because everybody ordered them all at once. And so now we're waiting for them. So once we get them, we will actually have to have trainings. I think I'm qualified to do the, the trainings from pharmacy, but then we will be, obviously, they'll be at each of the school sites and will be kept like everything else, like EpiPens and those things in the locked cabinets that in, either by health clerks or, or nurse.
Why would a school say no? Why wouldn't they just send them out to the schools anyways?
I think that the first of all was this had to be discussed at Crisick with our liability insurance and they had to agree and say that, that they were okay.
Responsibility.
To, to be correct. So I think that's what some people are, were worried about. But as you heard, I think this morning, there was Sacramento City School District had received their shipment and they were moving forward. But of course, Sacramento is huge compared to Port Key, so. And we actually have a meeting on Friday with a county superintendent, which he, he, we'll talk briefly about it on Friday, but he is setting up a group to meet and specifically address this. And he says that I share what I've done in, in getting our application in prior to, to others, so.
Is that beneficial to us, for you to be there at that meeting?
Yes, and I, no, and I will be.
It's a little show off.
Kind of not a show off.
No, it's a show off for us. You were in front of the, the game. Because other schools are dragging their feet and they're going to be stuck on a waiting list.
Absolutely.
Could be.
And uh our multi-tiered support system continues to be implemented at each of the sites, training, including activities, I think, tomorrow at both minimum days at both uh at both uh campuses. Um, I'll be meeting with the county and state mental health officials tomorrow to learn more about a grant that we applied for uh along with five additional uh districts. And we were granted, and it is over a million dollars, to provide mental health support for for students. Um, but what that will look like or or what the program is going to look like is yet to be fully um detailed. Uh, it is made, it is both federal funds, state funds, and a lot of it is from uh individual, individuals like the Gates, Belinda Gates, and all of those foundations that that are supporting the the funding of that. So as I hear more, I will certainly uh share with everyone, but I think it'll be a great opportunity for our kids. And I want to also thank the district office. I know Antonio, I was kind of poking fun at, but it's it's been, you know, a very long rough couple of months, uh, as we've gotten started. It is between COVID and between negotiations and between just the daily runnings of of the sites. There is very little uh downtime, and and I appreciate the work that that they each have done. Um, and I know that at the sites, it's no different and it's is continuing to be. Um, but it's also much better to be back rather than in a virtual world, so I'd rather have those problems in person.
All right, moving on to board member comments, Mr. Ammons?
Well, I didn't go to all the games, but what games I did, soccer and volleyball. The kids, uh, they all had a lot of fun. Everybody had a good time and they seemed to be really good sports. You know, the majority of them are are respectful of the other teams and uh make you proud to watch them. I was pretty happy about that and looking forward to all these events that are coming up. They look like a lot of fun events and probably get a chance to cook at a couple of them. And uh, lastly, I'd just like to thank L U for his commitment, this long commitment to Keys community and to the kids, and uh, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's about it.
All right.
If I could just add, Jimmy reminded me of something that I want to share because it was communicated both to Mrs. Ruger and I um, multiple times and by multiple districts um about how well and respectful our kids were at these games, and I will tell you, they they cheered for the other teams. They went out, ran out on the court and did the, formed these bridges where the kids could go, the tunnels some of the kids could go under. Um, they were respectful people, whether they, it was food service and concessions to, you know, uh, having perfume in a bathroom. I'm not, I'm not joking. I mean, it was, they it was just, it was a really nice thing to hear. So I I'm sorry that I didn't put that in my report because that really kind of is the highlight of the thing is that our kids are are amazing. And certainly you can't be embarrassed about taking our kids to other districts. They they are certainly models and examples of good uh, good, good kids.
All right, Mr. Green. Hold on to your seats, everybody.
No, I was just, I was kind of daydreaming into what you were saying. So I I, on that note about the sports, you know, I I'm I'm more into the musical into that. I, you know, Jimmy and Jeff, you know, obviously, they got the sports wrapped up. But one thing I heard tonight that that it just stuck with me this whole time was when Jeff said, you know, he watched you sit and the kids gravitate to you. And that caught me off guard because I would think the kids would gravitate to Jeff, right? I mean, Jeff's just that kind of magnet for that. But when he said that, I thought, boy, isn't that, isn't that the way I would want it? Right? You're our leader, right? You are our leader. You lead this team. Yeah, and um to have these kids identify to that is just amazing to me, you know, it's just, it's so, what a blessing it is for you too, you know, not just the kids, but you too. And I just wanted to make sure you knew how much we appreciate. I know I can speak for Jeff, Jimmy. Our our other board member. I know that we appreciate that. And um, but it did catch me off guard when I I would have really thought the kids gravitate more towards Jeff, but it made sense, you know.
We gotta fight over the cool kids.
I just do, I. And then the next thing is Mr. Murray. Mr. Murray, listen.
He came back just to hear your speech.
I it he, I was hoping because these, you know, the charter school and me, we kind of, we kind of, it's like north and south magnetic poles there. I I get almost offended a little when I hear the charter kids talk because they're so, they're so apt to to their communication skills and how they present themselves. And I, and I I feel a little inferior. And tonight, when I watched that 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 group of yours do what they did, it was magical. It was, it was professional. It was, it was the best of the best. And then when I heard you're the leader, you know, I didn't know that, even seeing you standing up there, I thought you were just kind of there to to help them along, but I didn't realize you were leading them. And then it all made sense to me. I thought, well, there it is, because you know, I am a Murray fan, and that's, I'm telling that publicly. I I think you you bring something to the table that most don't. And um, and I I seen it tonight and I thought, wow, Mr. Murray, home run, my friend, home run. Them kids, they didn't just articulate, they physically showed power in what they were doing. And and so it wasn't just one thing, it was two things going on, and even probably more than I identified. It was even bigger than that. But um, I just wanted to say thank you for that, for for the mentoring and and the leadership that you have, Mr. Murray. That was pretty special, my friend. So thank you. Yeah, yeah, I I, you know, I clap for you, my brother. I clap for you. So thank you, Mr. Murray, for being you. Um, other than that, you know, I love this job. Um, I think it's a blessing to be here and to be part of a school that I was part of. And um oftentimes I daydream a little bit because I remember playing basketball in here. I remember carving my name over there and.
That's where we have our problem.
Yeah.
Right there where you put your name.
You know, so I, it's just what a blessing to be here, and I I thank everybody for allowing me this opportunity. So thank you, everyone.
All right, Mr. Burnout?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the leadership of Mr. Brazil of having the reserve that we could come and settle, yes, on a you know, the negotiation of the percentage that the staff and administration that received and rightly do. Um, inflation's very high, the gas is very high, so I want to thank uh once again the leadership here. Uh, and you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
I tell you what, watching those kids play those sports games, that is so much fun, win or lose, it's a great time to watch those kids. But I want to say thanks to Ms. Severa, uh, Ms. Moran and Coach Armando for all their hard work uh with these kids.
All right, perfect, thank you. Um, I have a whole list. Um, I played the volleyball teachers game and I'm absolutely bombed. I think I was the worst person on the court. Um, I I really do, and the kids all made fun of me, and they said, you all asked at the games to do this and you don't do it? Um, I literally had to email their coaches and say, whatever you hear about me is true, because I knew they were gonna say it. Um, I feel like I'm pretty good at volleyball, but I choked that day. Uh, Jeff put on a great show. He was amazing.
I hadn't laughed that much in a very long time, so.
Um, I got the glasses the next day, so I think that's probably, I'm gonna blame it on needing glasses. Um, but Mr. Brazil, you know, in years past, I was good on the volleyball court. I bombed.
Remember that.
Uh, but it was a, it was great to play with some of the new teachers. Uh, I really enjoyed it. It was a a really fun game. I really thought there was no question we were gonna win, but we lost our first game. Um, because of me, uh, but uh we picked it up and I just kept subbing out as much as I could to let other people play. Uh, but win or lose, I love playing up with the kids, and I want to say this is the first year that most of the audience cheered for the staff. And uh, it wasn't me, it was the staff.
Pity.
What?
Pity.
A pity? But uh, they weren't cheering for me at all. So, but it was, it's really tough to yell and scream at soccer, uh volleyball players to do something, and then you go out there and don't do it.
Oh.
It's tou, it's embarrassing, but I I enjoyed it. The kids had a great time. Uh, walkthroughs, we had a great time walking through. I think the best thing is when we got into the band class and it was a prep. We literally sat there for twenty minutes and had a nice talk with uh what he expected, what he wanted, how he feels, and he's he's very happy. Uh, and he's looking forward to a great show. When you brought up the the music, I was like, wow, Wes should have been there.
Sure.
Uh, you know, when we walk in on someone's prep, we really try not to bother them. We try to move on. That's their time, and he asks us, please stay and sit down, and we had a great conversation. Uh, he's very friendly. He likes his schedule, likes his five days. Um, just had a nice open conversation and uh he's really happy with uh how many students signed up for band. Um, we got thirty guitar players trying to, trying to swing through there. Uh, and that's his most popular thing. Um, sports, again, iterate, when uh we had to go to Denair early because we only have one sports bus. So I had to go in the office, check in, wait a couple minutes, get let in. When we walked into the Denair gym, the coach comes over, tells all the girls to go change in the locker room, opens up the perfume cabinet, all the girls could get perfume, handed out Rice Krispie treats. We go out there to go sit and warm up. They go, hey, go get after school lunch program. We made enough for all these sports kids. So not only are we going to the other school early, invading their space, they're handing out anything they can possibly want. They gave us a locker room, which usually the girls change in the bathroom. And then they fed us. They fed all the students and they loved the food and, you know, and then one of the girls like, oh, this pizza's better. Another girl's like, this is the same pizza we, you know? And so they felt like it was more special coming from another school.
The atmosphere.
Yeah, and then um Mo, who was one of the the food ladies, and she comes out, she said, those are nicest, nicest kids I ever served. They were so appreciative that we offered them food. Um, and so it was really nice to see that one, especially when we go to another school. And then with the, with the fans, uh, the girls took a a hard loss. We had some criers. And these turlak Christian grandmas come over there and start hugging them and rubbing their backs. And then so when turlak Christian was the next game, and so all our girls gravitated to cheer on turlak Christian. And all these grandmas, they're all sitting around L U saying how great these kids were, but I really think it's, the the grandma showed love and support to these, to these strangers. And our kids wanted to give it back. Uh, so it was really nice. They did make a soccer tunnel, which usually is not made in volleyball, but uh it was, it was a big fan, but I and I, I didn't get to to hear, but everybody was talking to Mr. Brazil about our our students. And that's another plus. I think that's really important when you do go to the games.
And Mrs. Ruger.
Yeah. Be doing it. Uh, again, I uh appreciate the contract uh extension. I look forward to another three years, maybe more. Um, we'll see when we get there. You'll probably be done with us. Um, again, you you support us professionally and personally. Um, and then I think, I think Wes said a little bit, but Ms. Sousa's presentation, I really liked it because I felt the teacher was talking to me. That's exactly what you said. And I, and I felt like I was being taught it, uh, and not just, here's some numbers, this is boring and um.
And that, and that's honestly what was shared, and I, both are are here tonight, what I've asked them to do the same. Um, with attendance is I want, I want people to feel walking away like they understand the process and so that there aren't any questions and um, you know, no one likes to be talked down to.
Yeah.
Um, and yet I think that it's important that our board is is well versed on the policies and procedures of the district. Um, because ultimately, part of what you do is to uh impact and and to uh vote on policy and 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 then uphold it. So I I think it's important to have those ideas and to know that, you know, that this is it's education, but it truly is a huge business and 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 it is, i- it's got a lot of ticking parts and a lot of things that are needed to make everything um work well, and I I think as long as the focus is truly on the child, I think that is is rewarding for all.
All right, and then my last one, I I can't top Wes's speech about Mr. Murray, but I appreciated the kids. Um, they sold it to us. They they were, half the kids memorized everything they were gonna say, and that's the reason I called you up because I wanted to to highlight it. Um, I'm not gonna be all mushy like Wes was, but uh it 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 was okay. The kids were the star, not Mr. Murray, all right? So uh, but I appreciate it, and that's the strongest I've ever seen a student body, and I know Ms. Moran has a lot to do with that too. But i- it's a, it's a strongest I've seen uh as a presence at a board meeting with uh with the elementary.
I felt it. It was a feeling, for sure.
And I definitely leave those kids and um, I I'm just, I'm so excited about where we go this year as a school and to just see how we go on this, like for the future. Um, I think students need to think of what it is to empower children, um, to be able to make choices. And how about that?
You you know, Mr. Murray, I was testing, and I hate to say it, but I, Jeff, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, take my show.
I was testing. Well, I said, one potato, two, three, four. So I I noticed the girl had mentioned the the amount of funds that were raised. And I thought, should I ask her and take a chance of her not knowing? Or just ask Mr. Murray? And I thought, wow. But they were so confident, I just, I had to. And she spit that answer out just like that, and I thought, wow.
Well, she didn't read, she didn't read someone else's script.
No, right, right. She was, she was informed.
And they're, and what they had is what they made. So um, so I gave them a few topics, and I was like, we need to have a topic like this, your words, your voice, it is my own.
Right, right, right. So so it was all right to ask her, I, but I was, I was on it, right? I was like, I don't know if I should.
Right. And then I just want to uh bring up Yogurt again. That's his nickname, I call him, because I, uh, he's such a good kid and he's not, he doesn't really play sports. Uh, I coached him at basketball and he, you know, he doesn't play sports much, but he went to every home game, worked the the scoreboard, helped with the books and all that, and I I've asked him to, you know, to really sign up and help Mr. Hughes and the and the eighth grade coach at basketball because he deserves a spot on the bus, how much effort he puts into the team. Um, and the set, the Wednesday's game, he he literally made dinner for his whole family, and then his mom dropped him off because he wanted to make sure his family ate while he was at the game. And on Thursday, he, his mom said, you can't go, you've been gone too many days this week, and he says, I won't go anywhere for two weeks if you let me watch the championship game. And so that's a lot for an eighth grader to, so, and he was already planning with the the volleyball girls to go to the pumpkin patch this Friday. He's not gonna go to the pumpkin patch because he chose the championship game. And that really shows leadership for for him and and I really, you know, he usually sits around us and he's such a good kid when we go to the way games, uh, and he's second loudest in the crowd because I am definitely the top. But um, I'm still getting over my cracked voice when it was breaking on Thursday night. But uh, that's all my um, all my stuff. Uh, thirteen point one, next board meeting will be held November eighth. Uh, closed sessions at, do we want to do closed session? You won't be here. I say we cancel closed session and uh just have a regular session at eight. If anything changes, uh, we'll make note of it.
At six, right?
At six, at six, correct. Are you guys okay with that? Okay, um, so right now we're gonna take off closed session, no, no reason to meet, and we'll meet at six unless anything changes. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have motion.
I have motion.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Jeff, for showing up.
Thank you.
Are we off?
Thank you, guys. Guys, have a good night.